Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February two thousand and twenty-four through January two thousand and twenty-five. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonandj.gov/calendar. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions button or the raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. A countdown clock will be used to help speakers keep track of time, and speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie will call the roll, but I guess I want to point out, we have two board members who are recused tonight and so are not, oh, well, Apolave is here, I see. I guess she'll drop off after we get through the very first items of business. But Nat Bodigheimer and Apolave Nuka are recused, I believe, from Princeton applications. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, certainly. Mr. Bodigheimer, Ms. Capazoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka?
Sorry, here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
We have a quorum, right?
We have a quorum. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. We have a quorum.
That I'm almost never not heard. And of course, when I mentioned being recused from Princeton applications, I meant Princeton University. Okay, announcements. Do we have announcements tonight from board members or staff? Justin, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. And the first announcement is Mr. Taylor is being moved over from an attendee, so he should be in shortly. We just had to work out some technical kinks. But good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the board and members of the public. Just a very brief announcement that I read in the newspaper. Princeton Community Housing received an award for the new apartment building at Princeton Community Village. You may remember an application for a twenty-five unit building in two thousand and twenty-one or so. That development, now known as the Jim and Fanny Floyd House, recently received an award from the Housing and Community Development Network of New Jersey for Outstanding Project in the Healthy Homes and Communities category. And just a reminder, this development was a result of the Third Round Housing and Fair Share Plan adopted by the board and endorsed by council in two thousand and twenty, as well as a subsequent rezoning of Princeton Community Village, which also went through the board and council. So, congrats to them, and, you know, thank you for helping to shepherd that award-winning project along.
Cool. Thank you for letting us know.
Yep.
Other announcements. Has Mr. Taylor gotten moved over yet? I'm not seeing him yet.
I don't see him in attendees or in participants now.
Sent a few invitations.
He is in the attendees, middle of the screen.
There we go. Jack, we'll wait for you to, well, no, we won't wait. We'll just, I know you'll be able to activate your screens, your cameras soon enough. Welcome.
There we are. I'm in, I think.
Yes, we, we hear you, but your camera is not yet activated. So, subcommittee reports, I understand we have a site plan committee report?
Yes, Site Plan Committee met yesterday to review an application for conversion at fourteen North Harrison Street. It's currently an office building, and they are looking to convert it to a joint occupancy building with residential on the second floor. The footprint in the exterior of the building will not change. There are some minor changes to the site to increase the amount of open space that's available, because that's a requirement for residential apartments. It has a couple of variances associated with it, so we'll come to the board. But the Site Plan Committee did find it to be a minor. We designated it as a minor site plan.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. We have one application before us tonight from the trustees of Princeton University. This is a minor site plan with variance. The Eisenhardt Arch relocation at College Road West and Springdale Road, this is block one-one-three-zero-one, lot eleven, and its file number P-two-four-two-four-five-two-nine-P-M. Welcome, Mr. Degracia, Mr. McCoy, and your team.
Madam Chair, proof of publication is proper. And Carrie, can you confirm that service was proper?
Yes, I can confirm that.
The board therefore has jurisdiction.
Great. Thank you both. Justin, do you want to say a few words first?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Jerry, would you like to swear me in?
Yep. And who else is going to testify on behalf of the?
We might as well swear in Dan and Dan and Derek, just for the heck of it.
Well, if you could all raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give of the truth.
I do.
It's just for the record, if you could say your full names.
Justin Lesko, L-E-S-K-O.
Derek Bridger.
Dan Weisman.
Dan Dobrovolski.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
One quick thing, excuse me, Justin, one quick thing. Carrie, would you move Ms. Nuka to the attendees' room? Okay, thanks. Justin, go right ahead.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll provide a very brief summary of the report that I co-wrote with our senior planner Ian Henderson, and I am going to share an image. And this might be my briefest intro thus far, at least that's the hope. So tonight, we are talking about the restoration and relocation of the Eisenhardt Arch on College Road West near its intersection with Springdale Road. As you could see in the aerial imagery to the right, the aerial imagery is from the publicly available NJ map Partial Explorer by Rowan University, and we can make this exhibit PB1.
Yes.
Great. You'll see the, and I'm just going to zoom in a little at this point, you'll see the Princeton University Graduate College adjacent to the private College Road West. Mercer Street is kind of to the north, northwest of the screen. Residential homes can be found along Mercer Street, as well as across Springdale Road, and immediately adjacent to the area you'll see tonight. I'll note that College Road West was restriped as an advisory bike lane in two thousand and twenty. What that means is it's a truly shared road between people on foot, people in cars, and people on bikes. One lane is striped in the middle, kind of for cars to go in, with bike lanes on each side. If cars are approaching from both directions, they then use the bike lanes to pass one another. This application does not propose any changes to that advisory bike lane, but I mention it as the application does include an arch over it. The subject property is in the E4 zoning district of the former borough, and to allow for the relocation and reconstruction of the arch, a setback variance is required to allow the arch to be set back twenty-one feet from the residential property to the north, whereas twenty-five feet is required in general, but also fifty feet is required, the distance from a residential district. Additionally, the structure is located closer to the lot line than the height of the arch itself. So, it's all kind of a setback variance, but for those three reasons. The property is not located within a locally designated historic district, though it is within the Princeton Historic District as listed on the state and national registers of historic places, and I'm sure Mr. McCoy will go into much more detail about the history of the arch, as well as the structural damage that it's received in the recent past that led to its removal and the proposed restoration in his presentation. So additionally, two trees will be removed, requiring two replacement trees per the shade tree ordinance. Eight trees are actually proposed, as well as ten shrubs. And with that being said, I will hold our very limited comments to the end, if they're not addressed in the university's presentation, other than to say that the university's storing of the pieces of the arch, the stone from it, the catalog, cataloging of those pieces, and ultimately restoring it, as they're proposing tonight, is commended. So, as was stated, Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weisman are here with their engineering and zoning report, and Mr. Dobrovolski is here with his landscape architectural report.
Justin, could you go back over the three components? One was the distance from residential property line. The second was the height versus the distance from the property line. What was the third?
The third one is the general setback of twenty-five feet.
Oh, okay.
From the adjacent property.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Justin. The only thing that you said that tripped me up a little bit was the discussion of the removal of two trees. I know there's going to be the removal of two big trees, but I think in addition, several smaller trees, based on my reading of Mr. Dobrovolski's notes. So I'm sure that applicant will address that, because I know they're replacing more, more trees than they're removing. But, and maybe it's been updated, maybe I'm wrong, but that's, that's the only thing I would, at some point, like clarification on either from the applicant or from Mr. Weisman.
You're correct, and I'm sure they'll all go into it, but it's, I was just mentioning the two trees that require replacements, and the others that don't.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything from Dan or Dan or Derek that warrants mentioning before the applicant has a chance to present? Oh, okay.
No, I would just, I wanted to commend them, because I was just starting my tenure at the town when they removed the arch, and I was not so sure it would be replaced, but I'm very happy that they followed through, so.
That's great. Thank you. Mr. Degracia?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome.
For the record, my name is Christopher Degracia from the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Biddle, and Wreath, here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. And as Mr. Lesko discussed, the application this evening is for a minor site plan with variances in connection with the restoration and reconstruction of the Eisenhardt Arch. As mentioned, it was hit by a truck, I guess, in two thousand and two or so, and instead of reconstructing it in its exact location, we are shifting it a little bit farther back, and this accomplishes a number of great things. First and foremost, trucks that are coming around the corner and have a tight turn will have the ability to maneuver towards the center of the arch, so it is less likely to cause damage. We are also removing what would be a front yard setback. So the structure's currently twenty feet from the property line in front, and we're shifting it about sixty-seven feet. So the proposal removes the front yard setback, and that side yard, which we were talking about, if you're measuring it from the largest, or the height that is above the lower wall, we are increasing the setback from about twenty feet to twenty-one-point-three feet. So we are reducing the nonconformity of the side yard. So all in all, it's, it's, including the restoration aspects, it also has some very nice positive planning aspects. And unless you have any questions, I think what I would like to do is call up our first witness, university architect Ron McCoy. We can mark in the presentation that we've submitted to the town as Exhibit A1, and we could have him sworn in.
Great. Mr. Degracia, if you anticipate other people testifying on behalf of the university, let's swear everybody in right now and save some time. Then we'll qualify people one by one. Well, I mean, right before they testify, not upfront.
Christopher, who else do you expect to have testified?
Ron, I think we have, well, we have Ron McCoy, we have Peter Chandler, and I think he's already in. I'm looking for.
Yes, he is.
Okay. Catherine Frey, is she here?
I don't think so.
I don't see her.
And what is her name?
She's actually in the.
Yes, I'll move her over now.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carrie.
And what is her name, Christopher?
Catherine Frey, F-R-E-Y.
I believe that's it.
Has she been sworn over? Has she been moved over?
Yes, she's, she has been moved over. Ms. Frey, if you could activate your camera and unmute yourself for, for being sworn in, thank you very much.
Yeah. If Mrs. McCoy, Chandler, and Frey can raise their right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So I just wanted to affirm, could you each state your full name and spell your last name?
I'll go first. Ron McCoy, M-C-C-O-Y, university architect. Catherine, why don't you go next?
Catherine Frye, F-R-E-Y.
And Peter.
Peter Chandler, C-H-A-N-D-L-E-R.
Peter, you're having some trouble with your audio. I think, I may say, might, well, if I try to adjust that.
Sorry, I forgot to put my boom down.
There you go.
Do that all the time. Peter Chandler, C-H-A-N-D-L-E-R, I'm the civil engineer from Penone Associates.
Would that all audio issues were so easily solved. Go right ahead, Christopher.
Thank you. So.
Or Ron, whoever goes first.
Yeah, so let me just state for the record, Ron McCoy is licensed in New Jersey, his license is current, and he's testified before this board many times.
We accept his qualifications. Thanks.
Thank you. So again, we've marked our presentation as Exhibit A1, and we can bring that up, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. McCoy to take us through it.
Great. Good evening, everybody. You can see this. So this is a small project that we've been working on for the last ninety-three years. And, and we hope we're going to get it right. We're confident that we got it right this time. And it's a beautiful part of the legacy of the collegiate Gothic campus at Princeton University. So I'm going to walk you through it. A little bit of the history, which is even more interesting what I have here, this is a kind of the bulleted list of the history. It's designed by Charles Clouter in nineteen thirty-one. Mr. Clouter was one of the premier architects of the collegiate Gothic campus at Princeton. It was originally located on a site where Dodge Gate currently exists, sort of at the bottom end of Blair Walk. At the time, it was under construction, and the stones were going up. There were concerns from the university community that it was blocking the beautiful vista of Blair Tower. And so, back even then, there was concerns about the university's project, and the, and the design was changed to the beautiful iron gates that you see there now. So at that time, in nineteen, in nineteen thirty-one, the stones were put in storage. Then, in nineteen fifty, a new site was identified on College Road, and it was built on, on the College Road site at the west, west end of College Road near Springdale Road. As, as has been said, in two thousand and two, it was struck by a truck turning the corner. The stones were put back into storage, and as of now, the stones have been in storage for forty-four years, and the arch has been up for forty-nine years. So it's, it's a neck-and-neck race. There's how much time it's been in storage, versus how much time it's been up. And as part of our ongoing stewardship and maintenance of the campus, we're proposing, as has been said, to relocate it, to rebuild it in a way that is safe from damage. So, slide three here shows the original proposed site in nineteen thirty-one, at where, where the Dodge Gates are currently, and the relocated site on the map on the right shows it at West College Road near Springdale Road. On the lower left is the Dodge Gate, the iron gate that was then replaced this on the, on the site, and as you can see, the iron gate preserves the vista toward Blair Tower. And above that is the original drawing of the arch. Now, on slide four, here it is showing its location in the upper left, as it was on the West College Road. An aerial view below, just of the general site of the graduate college, it would be a little bit off the screen in the woods on the upper right of that slide. And then again, another drawing of the plan and elevations and sections of the archway. Now, here's where I want to point out something here on slide four. You'll see at the base of the arch, there was a granite wheel guard. That wheel guard was designed to prevent trucks from getting too close to the spring point of the arch, and therefore clipping the arch, and therefore damaging or destroying the arch. So keep your eyes on that. Slide five illustrates, in the photograph in the upper left, those wheel guards are not there. So somehow, we think the wheel guards were not installed, and so the truck was able to get close to that arch as it turned the corner, as Mr. Degracia said, clipping it and causing structural damage, which led us to put the scaffolding up until we took down the spring, the spring in the arch. So that was the source, that was one of the sources of the problems. That's one of the things that we're going to fix in this, in this proposal. Slide six simply shows the archway with the scaffolding supporting it temporarily, and on the right-hand side, you'll see the removal of the, of the archway and the remnants, the buttresses on either end, and the pedestrian pathway on the south end going through and connecting to, to spring, to College Road. Now, on slide seven, it's just a, one of the beautiful drawings that we have. We have records of all the beautiful original drawings, and it is a gorgeous piece of stonework. And slide eight shows the cataloging of all the stones that we have been storing for these forty-four years, on and off, in our yard in, in the West Windsor property. So each stone has been labeled and identified, and we know we're going to reuse everything that can be reused. You'll see here, some of the stones need to be replaced or replicated. So we're doing as much as we can to reserve, we've, we have done everything we can to preserve the, the stones that are available to us. On slide nine, this is just another drawing that shows the cataloging of the, the numbering of the stones on the drawing on the left, and then again, the details of those stones in our storage yard in West Windsor. Slide ten shows the archway as it is today, the remnants of the buttresses on either side. The pedestrian pathway has been blocked up, and as people have said, this is an opportunity for us to do it in a way that we think will be safe. Slide eleven gets to the point of the, exists, shows existing conditions. It shows the existing location of the archway, and it shows the, the trees that will be removed. Those, obviously, the circled in red with the Xs. So those are the trees that are supposed to be removed. Slide twelve shows, sorry, we've rotated the plan back and forth here. So slide twelve shows the proposed planting plan with a mixture of hollies, some six red buds, and some fringe trees. So that's the replacement strategy for the landscape. But this also shows the archway moved back away from the street by about, I think, sixty-seven feet. Slide thirteen is just an illustrative drawing, showing how the, how the kind of rosebuds will be more featured in the foreground to the west, and the hollies will provide some denser background to the archway on the east side of the archway. You'll also see here how the roadway pinches, and then I'll show you in another, in another drawing, the important wheel guards, the granite blocks will be, are designed, and will be installed and be, and they will prevent trucks from getting too close to the spring point of the arch. This shows those setbacks, as was said, sixty-seven feet from the west and twenty-one-point-three feet to the north. These are the variances, as, as Mr. Degracia said, we are reducing the noncompliance of the existing side yard condition by a bit.
And, and Ron, as, oh, I'm sorry, on that, they could see the current location also of the existing archway, which basically touches the property line on the top, and then you could see, you know, how it shifts back.
Right, right. Slide fifteen is a detail that shows the new granite wheel guards, shows the pinching of the roadway. It shows the single lane at the middle of the street, as Mr. Lesko presented, and the shared pathway, the shared shoulder pathways on the north and south parts of the road. And as has been said, by moving it back fifty feet, we have plenty of turning radius for trucks to make the corner and align themselves to the center of the archway. This also shows the twenty-one-point-three feet setback, and that setback is to the, the point at which the archway is measured as a setback. The bit of the curved form to the north of that, of that line, that's below the, that's below the height that counts in the terms of setback calculations. That doesn't count.
Yeah, and just for clarity, walls that are less than six feet are not considered structures, but if we were to measure it from the existing to proposed, we're going from basically zero-point-one feet to the property line to five-point-two feet in the proposed condition. And Ron, can I just ask you to point out, as they come down that pedestrian path, there was a comment in the report about the, the connection from that to that pedestrian and bike path. We would be getting in a ramp at that place or.
Yes, we'll put in, we'll put in accessible ramp here, connecting this, this landing here. As you pass through the archway going to the east, we'll have a disabled ramp that connects down to that shared pathway in the street.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask a very quick question about that pedestrian archway? Actually, you can, you can move to the next slide, because that shows it better. Are the dimensions of that archway, the pedestrian archway on the right, are they changing from?
No.
Okay.
Which is existing. It'll be a rebuild of, it's, what's, what's there today?
Yeah, a mock-up a little later makes it look a little narrower, and I, I thought it probably wasn't changing. I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, it's not changing.
The width is not changing, but the whole structure is being.
The entire, the entire structure is being moved up two feet.
Oh, that's why it, okay, got it. Yeah, of course.
Good eye. So the proportion, the proportions do change. So.
Yes.
So the, the, the three safeguards for safety are moving it further to the east so that trucks can align themselves as they turn, raising it two feet so that we raise the spring point, and therefore the point of conflict with any, the largest trucks in, on New Jersey roads, which is thirteen feet six, I think. And then the wheel guard. So it's, those three strategies will ensure the safety of the archway.
Great. Thank you.
So you see here, the fourteen feet to the spring point, which aligns with the, that granite curb block, and the nineteen-foot four to the top of the archway. This is slide sixteen. On slide seventeen, now we're just looking, turning around, going the other, the other direction. So we're looking toward the west, and again, you see the two-foot elevated base that we're adding to it. You see the granite wheel guard, and you see the clearances above the maximum permissible truck height. Okay, so that's slide seventeen. Slide eighteen, it actually shouldn't be here, so I'm going to skip it. It just was a, a sort of a random slide. Somehow, it got left in the presentation. Slide nineteen talks about the warning signs that, that still, in spite of all the devices we're doing, and strategies we're doing to eliminate and protect the safety of it, we do have low clearance signage as you approach it from the west, as you approach it from the east, and even as you turn at the very eastern end of College Road. So we're warning, warning vehicles that there is a low clearance ahead. Slide twenty shows renderings on the left of the proposed configuration and on the right of the existing condition. And slide twenty-one is the end of the presentation, and I hope that fills in the questions and gives you an idea of the history and the strategies to remove, to move it and restore it and save it. and the strategies to remove, to move it and restore it and save it. So I can stop here and I can pull up any slides that people want to talk about.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCoy?
Ron, I have two. Number one, in terms of the the signage, that's already in the plans?
Yes.
Okay, and with respect to that accessible ramp, is that in the plans as well?
I don't think that's in the plans, but we will add that as a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
So I was noticing, you know, the photographs of the stored stonework. There's a really beautiful, I think you call it a rosette. And I wasn't seeing that in the rendering. Is that, where does that exist? Or is it part of the arch or is it just stored with?
I will ask Catherine to tell us exactly where that's located.
Yes, and those details with the, there are two round tracery units and they face the east side, the opposite side. So each side is different.
Got it.
Ms. Fry, since who's, I'm sorry.
No, I, I think you're going to ask the same question I was, go ahead.
Qualifications?
Yeah.
Yeah. Catherine Fry, you were already sworn in, but can you give us a little bit about your education and your licensing?
Yes, I'm a project manager with Mills and Schnorey Architects and I'm a trained architectural conservator.
And your, your edu, just a little bit about your education?
I have a master's in historic preservation from the University of Pennsylvania.
Great, thank you, we accept your qualifications.
So ma'am, you're you're not a licensed architect, I take it. But you have these other qualifications.
Yes.
Excuse me, that you described, thank you.
So any, that that answers your question, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, thanks.
Mr. Lusko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ron, would you be able to bring back up slide twenty?
Sure.
Whatever your second to last one was. I just wanted to point something out to make sure the board was aware. Yep, so it's kind of hard to see here, but obviously, I think Ron might have mentioned this, but the pedestrian passageway is currently closed. And also, you know, it's almost, I didn't realize until this application, but you can't see those wing walls. They blend in because they're so overgrown with ivy and and other things that I honestly was not even aware those were there. So just wanted to point that out for the board that it looks like they'd be nice and cleaned up as part of this application.
Can I ask?
Thank you.
Could I ask Ms. Fry a question? David had asked you about the medallions, I didn't quite catch what the answer was because we haven't got switched over to the qualifications part. So the the medallions are not part of the project?
No, they, they are, they are on the opposite side, the east side of the arch.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Freddie Pearl Mutter?
Yeah, I just want some clarification. I think you said that this is now one lane, is that correct?
It is, yes, that's that's been the configuration for the last few years.
And then how do, I mean, is there some traffic light or something? How do people know when they're going, I mean, you can see, obviously, there's a truck coming the other way, but
There's signage on, as you come into the street from either end that that indicates the sort of movements that one should make so that when you're approaching an oncoming vehicle, as Mr. Lusko said, one or both of the, both of the cars approaching each other will, vehicles approaching each other will move into the bike lane. So the overall width functions as a two-way street, but we're protecting the shoulders in 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 unless there's a kind of condition where two two vehicles are crossing each other.
What is the speed limit there?
I think it's twenty-five, but I'm not sure. We'll have to come back to you on that. If it matters, I ride the, I ride my bike on that street every morning and every afternoon.
And you're still here.
I'm still here. And I would say people are actually well behaved on that road.
The posted speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour.
Nope, you're going to have to qualify yourself.
Peter? Oh, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Fine, Ms. Chandler, can you tell us a little bit about your your education and your licenses and the work you've done in New Jersey?
Sure, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey. I got a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've been practicing, I've been licensed since two thousand and one and I've been practicing for the last twenty-three years, doing various projects. Recently testified to this board for the library addition at the Institute of Advanced Study.
Great, thank you, we accept your qualifications.
So I just wanted to provide a comment to the question that the board member had asked. And I just looked on Google Earth, the the posted speed limit on College Road is twenty-five miles an hour.
Okay. Is there any other formal testimony, Mr. De Gra, oh, I I see Julie Capizoli has a question, but do you have any other testimony to to give?
Nope, we, we do not, we have our, we certainly have our consultants and witnesses available for questions, but we're finished with our direct.
Okay, great. Julie Capizoli?
Thanks, I just wondered about the bottom two feet of material. Is that limestone and how will that blend in with the existing materials?
I'll let Catherine answer that one.
Hi, Julie. And the the bottom two feet is proposed to be a deer aisle granite. Actually, we have the original specifications and for the construction of the arch in nineteen fifty-one. And that called for granite as the the base stone and granite wheel guard. So we're intend to use that same material.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you.
Can we go back to the next to the last slide for a moment?
Sure.
So I see cars coming out, there's kind of a single lane. But the cars going in, what do they do? They just wait if there's a car in that lane coming out, is that, is that the way it works?
They I think what's happening here is that the photograph on the right is not the current striping.
Right, it's it's the
Photograph on the left, the rendering on the left is the current striping. So yes, if 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 two cars are heading head-on, they have to negotiate the courtesy of letting the other car pass. And that's, that's a condition that a lot that exists throughout the the length of the road.
Okay.
And and Jerry, pushing it back, you have better visibility to see the cars coming from both directions. So it's a much safer plan in its new location.
Yeah, thank you, Christopher.
And because of the wheel guards, it pinches it a little further, though, in the proposed design, is that correct?
Correct, correct. But as we've learned from the collapse of the bridge, from the collapse of the arch, the structural damage, those wheel guards are essential.
Yes, yeah, it's a good. Other questions? From board members, any any questions or comments from our professionals? Dan Weisman, Dan Dobremilsky, Derek Bridger? Any, any questions you have or anything to add at this point before we hear from members of the public, if anyone wishes to speak? Dan Weisman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick question, a comment on the report, just that the applicant provided detour plan subject for review of the engineering department for the construction of of this arch. Obviously, that roadway will have to be closed for some time to to build this. So we would just ask that if this application is approved, that that be a condition applied to the approval.
I take it your condition, your section six point oh one and two, they'd be, they're kind of the standard stuff.
Yes.
Yep.
That is correct.
No objection.
Thank you.
I noted in Mr. Dobremilsky's memo, he asked about the treatment of the ground plane at the base of the arch. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Catherine, can you?
Yes, there was a comment about how that would be treated and it's our intention to have a stone mow strip or pavers around the base of the arch. So that the the limestone and granite parts of the arch are not directly against soil. And then also the the ground plane would be covered with ground cover or mulched.
Well, when you say ground plane, could you explain exactly what that is?
Dan, yeah, okay, nevermind. I I wasn't familiar with the term myself, so Dan Dobremilsky or Ms. Fry, either one of you can explain for Mr. Muller and the rest of us exactly what is ground plane. I guess it means just the immediate surroundings of the base, but I'm not sure.
Yes, that's what, that's what I interpreted that to be.
Correct, yeah, just what's going to happen at the base so that there's not damage to the stone from maintenance.
Well, I see. Is there anything you'd recommend, Dan?
I think what they said was, what Catherine suggested was appropriate.
And what was that again?
It was a stone mow strip. And I don't think you have any beds at this point connecting to the the walls or the the arch any longer, so it'll probably just be a stone mow strip along the whole edge of the 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 structure.
And what is a mow strip?
It's just an area where you'll put like stone, like a landscape stone at the base so that you have to have trimmers or mowers impacting the structure.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any, anything else from our professionals before, or board ICU Julie, Julie Capizoli?
Sorry, I'm on this road a lot, so do you have any idea how how long this whole project will take?
The construction, I don't know, do we need to bring in Grant Peatman for that question? I don't think, I don't know if Grant was
So Grant Peatman is our project manager at Princeton University. Grant.
He's here.
Oh, there he is.
He's here, but he hasn't been sworn in yet, so he doesn't need to be qualified, I don't think, but but he should be sworn in. Mr. Muller, go ahead.
If you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, sir.
That's one or affirm, could you please say your full name and spell your last name?
My name is Grant Peatman, last name P E A T M A N. I'm project manager at Princeton University.
Thank you.
To respond to the question, we will have to close the road down for several weeks in the beginning to deconstruct the arches. We will then open it up as we evaluate and have to refabricate some of the stone and the Dutchmans. And then when we have favorable weather, we will then have to close the road down for approximately six months.
Right, thank you.
Glad you asked, I can, I can see your heart sank a little bit. But, but it's, it's good to know.
It's worth it, it's worth it.
After ninety-three years, six months is nothing.
It's worth it.
Okay, any other questions before we open public comment? Seeing none, this is a portion of the meeting we reserved for public comment. So, and I see one hand up already, if you could, Carrie, move Felicia Spitz over. Anyone who would like to address the board, please virtually raise your hand at this time and we'll take people in order in which hands were raised. So if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand now, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Spitz. Hello, Mr. Muller will swear you in.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
Please say your full name and spell your last name.
Felicia Spitz, S as in Sam, P I T Z. And as a resident on Hasselt Avenue, I just want to thank everyone at the university for this effort. In my house, we call this the scary street because the cars, in order to see out to the intersection, they pull out very far and very quickly. So when we first moved here, the sidewalk is on that side of the road and our son was always afraid to cross that street. So we would say, be careful of the scary street. So I'm really happy that you're you're moving this back because that needs to happen for pedestrian and bicycle traffic because those cars. And it's just such a beautiful project, so I'm sure it's not inexpensive, but thank you for restoring it, that's all.
Thank you very much, that's helpful. I see no other hands raised, but I'll ask once again, if anybody wishes to speak to the board, need to raise your hand right now. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and invite further questions, discussion, comments from board members or from staff. And if if we're at the point where someone would like to make a motion and before Mr. Muller goes over conditions, that would be helpful.
I know it's quite unusual, we we have a lot of activity in the attendees. People are popping in, popping out, and I don't know what you want to do.
Uh, well, but nobody raised their hand, so. But Ms. Capizoli, I think, moved, did you raise your hand to pose another question or do you wish to?
No, I, I wanted to move to approve this project with the conditions that Jerry's going to read to us.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Yeah, and the, and the variances that were that were laid out. An accessible
Thank you, moved by Ms. Capizoli and seconded by Ms. Sax, go ahead, Mr. Muller.
Yeah, the plan, should add to the plans that inaccessible route from the pedestrian path to the street with respect to the ground plane at the, at the base of the of the arch, it should be a stone mow strip that is a landscape stone. Whole, a whole route should be identified and the standard conditions in terms of the construction cost permits and approvals, possibly from the, to the extent necessary, and that might include the Mercer County Planning Board, the Soro Conservation District of Mercer County and the Delaware and Meridian Canal Commission, those are the only ones.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. With those conditions, Carrie, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Yes, of course. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
You're on mute, Jack.
Yes.
There you go.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Um, really an exciting thing to see and I almost said at the start of the meeting, this should be pretty straightforward and smooth, but I didn't want to jinx anything. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
You entertain a motion to adjourn?
I would be happy to do so and to second it.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Thanks, everybody. Aye. Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Thanks, everybody.
Hi.
Thank you.
We meet again before, no, not before Thanksgiving. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and we'll see you in December.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bye-bye.